Welcome to the Falmouth Chamber of Commerce.
The Falmouth Chamber is dedicated to working on behalf of our members to make Falmouth a better place to live, work, and conduct business. We are committed to developing the economic, cultural, educational, and civic interests of our community and welcome the support from all organizations to achieve our combined goals. Whether you call Falmouth home, are a summer resident, or a visitor, we hope you take advantage of all that the Chamber has to offer.
SCTV's live coverage of Falmouth Select Board meetings is brought to you in part by John's Liquors, 729 Main Street, Falmouth, 508-548-2287.
Good evening and welcome to the meeting of the Falmouth Select Board. It is Monday, August 26, 2024. It is exactly 6:30 PM. I would ask that you join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And as we go into this meeting, I would ask that you please silence your cell phones and please double-check that they are indeed silenced. And secondly, please notify me as the Chair if you are making an audio or video recording of this open session. The placement and operation of this recording equipment may not interfere with conducting this meeting. Okay, we're gonna start with proclamations and I'm gonna push it over to Ms. Goldstone. Except if you could pass the proclamation back to me, that would be helpful.
Well.
Sorry, because we're online.
As I did not commit it to memory.
Mr. Muscally sent it back.
But I am thrilled to be able to offer this proclamation in honor of Christian Tucker Morton. Whereas Christian Tucker Morton of Boy Scout Troop 42 has successfully completed qualifications for the rank of Eagle Scout, a rigorous and demanding process that teaches patience, perseverance, and teamwork and requires strong goal-setting. And whereas Christian Tucker Morton met these challenges with aplomb and shall be recognized as an outstanding representative of his family, his troop, and his community. And whereas the Boy Scouts of America, long acknowledged for building fine citizens, calls for Special Court of Honor to award its highest symbol of achievement to those who complete this rank. And whereas Christian Tucker Morton is now an Eagle Scout with all its rank and privilege, now therefore we, Nancy Robbins Taylor, Edwin P. Zalinski II, Douglas C. Brown, Robert P. Muscally, and Heather M. H. Goldstone, as Select Board of the Town of Falmouth, do hereby declare and proclaim Christian Tucker Morton as Eagle Scout. In witness whereof, we have heretofore set our hand and caused the great seal of the Town of Falmouth to be affixed on this 26th day of August 2024, with congratulations to Tucker and his entire family and his troop.
Great, thank you.
Second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion amongst the boards? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
And congratulations.
Yes.
Okay, we're gonna move into recognitions. Any recognitions from the board?
I do have one.
Go ahead.
I was happy to volunteer for the first time at the road race this year, so I had to get there really early. And it was the first time I've ever really participated and I got a really good look at how organized the whole thing is. It was just so tight and well-run. Two thousand volunteers plus all the police and fire and the whole thing was like clockwork, so it just adds off to the organizers of the road race.
It was a great event.
Yeah.
Certainly was.
I was gonna say something similar and second, the recognition of the Falmouth Road Race just as an incredible organization and event that ends up benefiting so many different organizations in our town. It was really terrific.
True.
Just an announcement, if I may.
Can we just finish recognitions and then we're going to announcements? Any other recognitions? Okay.
Okay. Well, as a Rotarian, I'm happy to remind the community that this Saturday and Sunday, the Rotary Club will be holding its annual craft fair at the band show and we hope you all attend and support Rotary. It's a wonderful organization, does a lot for the town, and this is a great event, so...
What time does that start?
I believe it starts at 10 and goes until 3:00. And that's Saturday and Sunday. Rain date is Monday. And actually, our former colleague, Sam Patterson, has come back specifically to help set up the craft fair, as he's done for the past 15 years. He's back in town or will be on Thursday.
If we can swing by and see him.
Any other announcements?
I'm gonna be out of town starting Wednesday till Sunday, so I'll be out of the state.
Thank you, Mr. Zalinski.
I can announce that I ran into Megan English-Bragg and she said to tell everybody hello.
Wow, I haven't seen her in ages.
She's doing great.
Okay, public comment. Public comment may be made on routine matters not on the agenda this evening. Comments are limited to two minutes. Please introduce yourself and since the matter has not been included on the agenda, the Select Board will not participate in any discussion or debate of your topic. Is anyone here for public comment? Yes.
Good evening, Allison Leshen. Though they might argue about the order, I think most people in town would agree with the list of priorities in the Select Board's 2023-2027 Strategic Plan. The ones that jump out at me are housing, specifically affordable housing, coastal resiliency, and water quality, both drinking water and the water in our coastal and freshwater ponds. These are all urgent worsening issues that are affecting the economy of our town already and have the potential to affect the health and well-being of our residents. So I'm worried that when I look back over the past seven Select Board agendas, just as a tiny sampling, totaling about 14 hours of meeting time, that there's a total of 10 minutes devoted to just one of these issues, affordable housing, and that was just changing some documents to an already-existing development. You did also hear a 15-minute report by the Affordable Housing Committee, but no action or decisions result from reports like that. None of the other priority issues received any time at all on your agendas, so I'm just wondering when and how these urgent issues will be addressed. Your agendas are full of beach wedding approvals, sign variances, and event fee waivers. I don't recall any of you running on any of those, you know, the number of sign variances you would approve. You campaigned to lead this town through dealing with some pretty existential problems. So I just, please, if we're ever gonna come to terms with these problems, something needs to shift, unless I'm missing something about when these things get addressed and the way you spend your meeting time. Maybe figuring out a way to offload the administrivia and focus your efforts on the big issues. We are looking to you for leadership. Thank you.
Anyone else here for public comment? Okay, we'll move into committee interviews. Interview, vote, and appoint Committee members. Affordable Housing Committee, Elizabeth Klein.
Hello.
We have all looked at your application. Is there anything else that you would like the board to know about you that isn't on your application?
Just, again, I took this up as a, in my free-time issue and started communicating with Dave Garrison almost a year ago now and have been trying to make some headway, attending the short-term rental working group meetings and trying to input whatever information I can there that would be helpful, and it felt like it was time for me to join the Affordable Housing Committee so that I had a more formal way of participating in this important topic around town.
Great, thank you. Questions or comments from the board? Go ahead, Mr. Brown.
I would comment that I found Ms. Klein to be very helpful with her input to the Short-Term Rental Working Group and very knowledgeable about the issues that she did her own research on, so I think she'd do a really good job on the Affordable Housing Committee.
I would agree. I've seen Ms. Klein at a number of meetings. She's obviously very interested and committed to this particular issue, so I would certainly be happy to make a motion to appoint Elizabeth Klein to serve on the Affordable Housing Committee for a term to expire on June 30, 2027.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion amongst the board? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Great, welcome and thank you.
Thanks for your time.
Thanks.
Okay, Zoning Board of Appeals, Nick Haney.
Good evening.
Good evening. And I'll ask you the same question. Is there anything that is not on your application that you would like the board to hear about you?
No, I just, I've lived in Falmouth my whole life and I now have the opportunity to put more time in, and this is a way that kind of revolves around what I'm familiar with and just to get involved with Falmouth now that I have the time with work and, you know, kids, so.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? Go ahead.
Mr. Haney, have you attended any meetings?
Yes.
How many, you think?
Four, four to five.
So you realize how much time it takes for the board to be prepared and it...
Yes, and it aligns with, you know, what I do in my daily, my day-to-day, when I'm out driving around doing stuff.
Sometimes it becomes arduous, so be prepared.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. Yeah, and that's why I couldn't go for this prior to, you know, now, but now, most of my day-to-day is out in boots-on-the-ground type stuff.
Appreciate that. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Great, Mr. Muscally?
Following up on the Select Member Zalinski's questions, being the Associate Member is kind of a unique position and situation, so I assume you've, you know, looked into what that requires and how you will participate as an Associate Member?
Yes.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments?
No, I think his background certainly seems suitable for this application and I think he's got an understanding now of, it's like one of the biggest jobs in our local government, so, okay.
Is that a motion, Mr. Brown?
I would make a motion to appoint Mr. Haney for a period ending 6:30, 2029.
I'll second Mr. Brown's motion, Madam Chair.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion amongst the board? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Welcome and thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Okay, we have a few minutes before we can start the public hearing, so I think I will take the consent agenda out of order unless any board member disagrees. If you have any item that you would like to hold, please notify me as the Chair. Consent agenda licenses. Consider approval of an application from Scott Tynell for a shellfish aquaculture license for a land-based upweller site at Rans Canal, floating bags within Rans Canal, and a 5.9-acre site in McGansett Harbor. Consider approval of an application for a two-day special one-day wine and malt liquor license, WM Cycling Event, Inc., Really Rad Festival of Cyclocross, Cape Cod Fairgrounds Saturday 10/26 and Sunday 10/27/24. Consider approval of the petition of N-Star Electric Company Doing Business as EverSource for permission to install approximately 60 feet of 1- and 3-inch PVC conduit and one new handhold southwesterly under Town Road, Ravenswood Circle, starting at a new handhold at base of existing pole 9081 to customer service-installed handhold. This work is necessary to provide electric service to 9 Grassmere Drive. Consider approval of the petition of N-Star Electric Company Doing Business as EverSource and Verizon New England, Inc. for permission to install one new J.O. pole to be labeled 69/67.5 approximately 50 feet west of existing pole 69-68 on Minot Road. This work is necessary for new EverSource equipment. Consider approval of the petition of N-Star Electric Company Doing Business as EverSource Energy for permission to install one new handhold and approximately 40 feet of 1- to 3-inch PVC conduit southeasterly under Town Road, Gosnold Road, starting at a new handhold at the base of existing pole 128-2 to new customer-installed handhold. This work is necessary to provide underground electric service to 17 Gosnold Road. Consider request from the Falmouth Fire and Rescue Department to accept a grant award in the amount of $10,000 from the Falmouth Road Race Philanthropy Program for the purchase of 35 Knox boxes, certainly with our sincere thanks to the road race. And E, consider request from Freshwater Pond's Advisory Committee to change its membership to seven full-voting members.
Madam Chair, I'll move the consent agenda.
Second. Okay, I have a motion and a second to move all items on the consent agenda. Any further discussion amongst the board? Hearing none, all those in favor? Aye, unanimous, thank you.
Easy.
Yeah, that's nice. Okay, we're just gonna wait for about 30 seconds and then I will ask Mr. Zalinski to please read the notice for our first public hearing. By law, it was advertised as 6:45 and I cannot start before then. Mr. Zalinski for the notice, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. In accordance with Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 87, Sections 3 and 4, a public hearing will be held on Monday, August 26 at 6:45 PM in the Select Board Meeting Room at 59 Town Hall Square, Falmouth, Mass. to consider the removal of the following public trees. Locations: 216 King Street, removal of a Norway maple, size 24 1/2 inches, reason excessive lean and large cavities. 216 King Street, removal of a little-leaf linden, size 22 inches, reasons unbalanced crown and lean from utility line clearance. The trees identified above have been posted for public inspection. Any objections to their removal must be submitted in writing to the tree warden prior to or during the hearing. Mailing address for the tree warden is Department of Public Works, Town of Falmouth, 416 Gifford Street, Falmouth, Mass. 02540. Email Jeremiah Pearson@FalmouthMA.gov 508-457-2543, extension 3008. Per order of Nancy Robbins Taylor, Edwin P. Zalinski, Douglas C. Brown, Robert P. Muscally, Heather M. H. Goldstone. Let me go, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Welcome.
Good evening. So the...
Introduce yourself, please, Mr. Pearson.
Jeremiah Pearson, tree warden and Parks Superintendent for the Town of Falmouth.
Thank you.
So the first two trees for this hearing, the homeowner would like them removed. They're in fairly poor condition. They have excessive leans from utility line clearance, so one of the trees, the little-leaf linden, has no center stem. It's completely, completely one-sided, which makes it probable the failure for, you know, any time the wind blows, pretty much. Second tree has a large cavity in it and it also has issues like the first tree. It's been cut back severely from line clearance. We, the Town of Falmouth, has spoken with EverSource, they have agreed to remove these trees, and we in the Parks Department will replace the two trees with suitable trees.
Any questions or comments from the board?
No, seems pretty straightforward.
Ms. Goldstone?
I'm curious what suitable alternatives would be and if there's something that's gonna have to be able to grow under or stay under the power line?
Yes, it would have, it would be a tree that grows under 20 feet, yeah. And usually, we try to find something that is native or is very resilient to that area.
Any other questions or comments? Questions or comments from the public? Sir?
Hi, I'm Dan McCorkle. I live at 15 Pleasant View, so about a block and a half up from the site there on King Street. And it's just, my question, I guess, is, I agree that those trees are nothing special and I know the one you mean that's leaning. At the same time, there's only about a dozen of those big trees between my street, Pleasant View, down to Clinton Ave, and it seems sad to lose them, and I guess I'm a little concerned. I want to make sure that this isn't just to make more parking spaces for that house, because it's not clear to me that the trees are all that much worse than, I mean, they're all kind of cut away to make room for the wires. Certainly, I'll, you know, defer to your judgment, but I wouldn't want this to be a decision that we make just because the homeowner wants it that way. I'd want it to be a tree-based decision, not a homeowner-based decision.
Thank you.
Yeah, so to answer your questions, this would not be for a parking lot. We would be replacing these trees. And I do realize there's several other trees on King Street that are almost in the same criteria, but, but we would replace these trees with, like I said, suitable trees and it wouldn't be used for parking.
Any other comments on this application from the public? Okay. Oh, go ahead. You may.
Just a question, following up on that last statement you made, Jeremiah. I mean, to what extent do you look for possible tree removal and tree, you know, where there may be needs?
Well, we are always out looking, but this is usually resident-driven, so we get several complaints daily about trees that people are worried that are gonna fail and hit their house. But we do, we do yearly go out and look for other trees that are not, say, right in front of somebody's house or like in parks or on Main Street and stuff like that, or always inspecting trees.
But anything that's in front of or on a residence-adjacent property or on their property, that's where the complaint comes from.
Yeah, mostly, yes. And we do, you know, we drive through uptown every day, we're always looking.
Okay, thank you.
For potential problems.
Any other questions? Okay, seeing none, I will entertain a motion to close the hearing.
So move.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second simply to close the hearing. Any further discussion amongst the board? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Discussion amongst the board?
Seems rather straightforward. I'd say I would make a motion to accept this recommendation to remove the two trees.
I'll second Mr. Brown's motion, which is described by the tree warden.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. So it's, the motion is to approve the application of Doug Age for the removal of the one Norway maple and the removal of the little-leaf linden at 216 King Street, Falmouth, as presented. So I have a motion made by Mr. Brown in a second. Any further discussion amongst the board? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
It's unanimous, thank you. Mr. Zalinski, I will ask you for the notice for the second public hearing.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Notice of public hearing, removal of public shade trees, Town of Falmouth Department of Public Works. In accordance with Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 87, Sections 3 and 4, a public hearing will be held on Monday, August 26, 6:45 PM in the Select Board Meeting Room at 59 Town Hall Square, Falmouth, Mass. To consider the removal of the following public trees. Location: Brick Hill Road between Josiah Path and 485 Brick Hill Road. One black locust, 14 1/2 inches. One black cherry, 6 inches. One sassafras, 10 inches. One black locust, 9 inches. One white oak, 8 inches. One black locust, 9 inches. Per order of the Select Board, Nancy Robbins Taylor, Edwin P. Zalinski, Douglas C. Brown, Robert P. Muscally, Heather M. H. Goldstone.
Thank you, Mr. Zalinski. Mr. Pearson?
Good evening again. Yeah, so these trees are right in the path of a proposed sidewalk. The developer conditionally obligated per the Zoning Board Appeals to put this sidewalk in, the trees are directly in that line of path. And there is no plan for replacement. The developer has already planted in front of this property and because it's a woodlot, we can't really plant something right there.
Madam Chair, if I may?
Go ahead.
So this is part of a special permit decision?
Yes, from the zoning board.
Okay. And that's already been recorded?
That's already been recorded, from my understanding, yes.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Mr. Brown?
Did I hear you right that the, there's sort of mitigation planting that's already been done?
He's done already a landscape in front of the property with trees in it, so yes, he did, it wasn't per se for this, he already has something in place. There's no, there's no area to plant in that.
In that same area?
In that same area, yeah.
But do you ever ask people to...
We do sometimes, we do. But with the amount of tree planting that we've got going on this fall and this spring, we don't want to over-plant and plant something we can't take care of.
Okay.
So, so sometimes we don't ask because we already do have a large planting initiative ahead of us.
Okay, very good.
Any other questions from the board? Ms. Goldstone?
Would, would that mitigation planting have to be town planting on town land or could that be on the property of the development?
We're allowed to do a setback planting up to 20 feet with the home, with the residents, okay, but they already did this before. This was all going through, so, yeah. But we do have that ability to do setback plantings.
Okay. Just looking at the fact that this, this development has already clear-cut close to seven acres of what was previously wooded land, so wondering if there's room for some summary planting elsewhere on the property.
I'm sure there is, I haven't gone through there. I've only been with just one part of those projects.
Is that something we could condition and ask for, some, maybe it wouldn't be one-to-one, but some additional planting?
On a lip application, you could do that, but the zoning board has overall say on what they get the contractor to agree to with respect to remediation of what's taken out. And how I understand it is, if it was a condition for them to put a sidewalk in, those trees had to come, there's not much we can do about it if it's already a decision and it's recorded at court.
Yeah, probably true. Okay.
Any other comments from the board?
I'll just say, with both of these, I find myself kind of gritting my teeth to go with voting for it, understanding the necessity in one regard, but also knowing that, as I know you know, planting a new tree this big does nothing to replace a tree that was this big or that big when it was cut down in terms of the carbon that it's storing, the habitat that it's providing, and so I wonder if this board at a future date might consider some policy options that would put into place proactively in permitting decisions and decisions across the town, a consideration of the climate and carbon ramifications of projects and decisions at the outset. You know, in this case, as we were just discussing, it almost feels like our hands are tied at this state of the, of the project, so.
Great idea.
It'd be a more prominent part of our consideration of projects.
Great.
One positive is that we're likely to have a lot more of these lip applications come forth where we can have part of that conversation.
Any comment from the public on this application? Okay, seeing none, I will entertain a motion to close the hearing.
So move.
Second. Okay, I have a motion and a second to close the hearing. Any further discussion amongst the board? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Discussion amongst the board?
I would move approval. We have a...
There is, there is a motion.
Motion to approve the application of the Village at Brick Hill LLC for the removal of an inventory of 15 trees located between 485 Brick Hill Road and Josiah Path in Falmouth as presented.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion amongst the board? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Get some rest.
Okay, we're gonna move into business. Business number one, Mr. Renshaw?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Chief Laurie and his command staff, Chief, you can come up to the podium, have done a tremendous amount of research into this body-worn camera program. I'm fully supportive of it. The technology has really changed over the past five to six years, and again, Chief Laurie and his staff have done a great job putting numbers together for the program in an attempt to bring a program, police body-worn camera program, to Falmouth. So Chief Laurie, I will turn it over to you.
Thank you. So what Captain DeCosta is handing out is something we were working on today to show you that we're trying to be as fiscally responsible as we can to keep the cost down. you that we're trying to be as fiscally responsible as we can to keep the cost down. When I implemented this program in central Massachusetts, we used the camera called Axon. It's the same company as that Tasers. We saved a little bit of money with the software, but they're very, very expensive. So, we were awarded a grant through the state for $250,000 to initiate the program. But the reason why, if you accept this grant, you have to understand that there's added costs for the next four years after that. So, the initial grant will get us all up and running, but with the Axon camera, you'll see basically that we were looking at potentially needing close to $120,000 a year for storage and different things to keep the program working. We're meeting with a third vendor, I believe it's GTAC, to see if we can have any more savings, but by going with Motorola, instead of $119,752 a year for the next following four years, it's $26,447. So, in our budget right now, we have $75,000 allotted. If we were to go with Axon, I'd have to ask you for more money, but if we go with Motorola, we would actually, wouldn't need that entire $75,000 to date. Axon offers some unique things, but Motorola, their newest version, it's the 700 model. The battery life is better, it's a great piece of equipment, and it's still, when you activate your cruiser blue lights, or you draw your sidearm or draw your taser, the camera automatically turns on to take away that human error. I'll tell you from my past experience, we were one of the first departments to jump onboard in central Mass. It's a great tool. It really is. It shows absolute transparency. It makes us better. I highly recommend that you accept the grant. We do have the $75,000 in our budget. I'll come back to you knowing that just by going from Axon to Motorola, which we're leaning towards right now, I believe it's $352,000 in savings over the contract. That's substantial savings. So, I think we're doing, we're doing pretty good on that, on that front. But hopefully you will accept it. I miss anything, Cap?
Questions from the board. Mr. Muscally?
Assuming this goes forward, Chief, when, when would it be operational? When do you anticipate that the officers would have this available?
So, I spoke with an attorney today on the law enforcement side that we deal with, he's sending me some policies for me to review. I do have the policy from where I was before. The captain and I will work on that policy, we'll sit down with the unions, we'll come up with a consensus moving forward. We won't have a problem, it's already been negotiated in their contract. And quite frankly, from the officers I've talked to, they're excited, you know, for it. We believe this is going to show, you know, we're doing things right the vast majority of the time. I think it reduces liability for the town. I can't tell you how many use-of-force complaints went away as soon as we hit play. You know, it's, it really is a great tool, and we want to be transparent, you know, and the DA, the district attorney, wants us to record all our interactions with witnesses. We can't do that now with a body camera, we can't. So, I'm excited for it. I think this is the way this, our profession is going, the policing profession is going. I think it should be a standard, just like Post, and I highly recommend it. I want to get this thing up and running, probably three or four months to get the equipment in. We'll do a trial this winter, you know, next summer, body cams.
I'm going to go to Mr. Zelinski, then Mr. Brown?
Chief, it's advantageous for you to do it now. Anyway, with, with all your new hires, you'll be really close to a full complement. It'd be a perfect opportunity to institute this new, this new tool and policy with the full staff, so there's no, nobody's playing catch-up, in my opinion. I think it's a great, it's a great move.
Yeah, we just gave our twentieth hire a conditional offer, veteran officer from central Massachusetts. We have one opening left, and I agree with everything you said. I think now is the time.
Thank you. Mr. Brown?
I think the program sounds great, it just seems like hard to believe the difference in price.
Axon's trying to chop their, their submittal to us now. We're cutting some things out, they want our business really bad, so, we're going to work with our vendors. I promise you, I'm going to bring in the best equipment possible. If I thought Motorola couldn't compete, I would ask you for the $119,000 a year. But I really do think it's a good product, and, both products. And we're going to look at a third, just because we want to make sure that, you know, we're doing the right thing. They're on the state bid list, we don't have to, but we felt we really wanted to be fiscally responsible with this program, because once you're in it, you're in it. You know, you're locked in.
Will they really lock in that pri, I'm sorry, just, will they really lock in that price for five years guaranteed, or is there some way to wiggle out of it?
No, there's no way to wiggle out of it. Contract.
So, you're looking at another option, and I know we're only here to vote on the, whether to accept the grant or not, but you'll obviously keep the town manager informed, who will then keep us informed of, of what option you actually come up with.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Ms. Goldstone?
Recognizing that you're still negotiating, can you just give us a sense of the kinds of features that you'd be not getting with, with Motorola that you would be with Axon? The kinds of things that are, make, make for the difference in price?
So, it appears that storage and their brand name is, is the largest. Storage, as you can see on there, is the most expensive, and they're negotiating back and forth on how much they would give us. So, we're going to work on that portion of it. Some of the features that appears most likely is the refresh rate, and they have put into their warranty that you'll get another camera in two and a half years and another camera in five years. That's with Axon. With Motorola, it depends on the, the contract we go with. The life of the camera, it appears at this point in time, is about three to five years, anecdotally, from what I've seen.
Thank you. Any other questions?
No. Lot to consider, but good luck figuring it out.
Madam Chair, you looking for a motion?
I am looking for a motion.
Madam Chair, I would move the acceptance of the SFY 25 law enforcement body-worn camera grant from the Executive Office of Public Safety and Security, Office of Grants and Research, OGR, in the amount of $250,000 to the Falmouth Police Department.
I would second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion amongst the board? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you for your work.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for finding that grant, too.
Another exciting day for Falmouth PD.
Yeah, Chief.
Okay, next, we have a report from the Bicycle and Ped Committee, and I've slated you for fifteen minutes.
Awesome. I have a flash drive. Oh, thank you, Peter.
Sure.
Tech guru.
It's loaded.
Should be, right?
Peter, check, I think it's loaded already.
Um, the PowerPoint?
Did you submit it to Diane? If you did not submit it, it was not loaded.
Heather, okay.
Did, did we not get the PowerPoint?
It's exactly the same, just in graphical, you know, like summarized form.
Okay.
But I'm happy to send it.
Okay, so, is it this one here? VPC?
Yeah, fifteen.
Thank you so much. And then do you use down arrows?
Yep.
Okay, super. Thank you, everybody. Kathryn Jansen, I'm the chair of the Falmouth Bicycle and Pedestrian Committee. Happy to be here tonight, and happy I'm not here at 9:30 at night, like last year. I want to thank some of my committee members and also friends of Falmouth Bike Ways for attending. If you guys would mind if you're a committee member or friend of Falmouth Bike Ways, just to show you that we're, you know, not all a bunch of Lycra-clad Tour de France riders, although there's nothing wrong with that.
Yeah, today.
So, our vision is that Falmouth is a great place to live and to visit, because its bicycle and pedestrian-friendly culture and infrastructure give us calm roads, clean air, and a healthy population in a vibrant economy. How do we look compared to this vision? Mr. Renshaw, I know you're a data-driven decisions guy, so all of these slides are made from the MassDOT website, accessible to the public. Anybody can get in there and slice and dice. I want to thank my committee member, Paul Joyce, for his hard work on this. So, we're looking at, let me give you some orientation, 2010 to 2023, and we took the upper Cape towns, Falmouth, Born Sandwich, Mashpee. We put Plymouth in to give us a bigger, close-by town. And then Rochester's in there, this is one of those weird things that you might not have known. A lot of cyclists actually go off Cape to ride in Rochester, because it's very quiet, the roads are quiet, it's safe. Okay. So, this is total accidents that happened between 2010, 2023, cars, bikes, pets, you know, you name it, in these towns. And on the right is total accidents per capita. So, if you look at this, you know, we're not really out of line, we're a little on the high side, but not, you know, compared to others. What about bicycle and pedestrian accidents? So, this is where the data really jumps. We have significantly higher rates of both bike and pedestrian accidents when you look at it per capita. And I'd make a note for those in the room who have questions about the data. The data is the same for every town, so if we think about seasonal adjustments, et cetera, that would be the same for every single town. So, again, this is from the same site, bicycle accidents per capita, pedestrian accidents per capita. What about our share of accidents? So, that last slide was the numbers. What about as a percent of all accidents, you know, kind of where are we? We're still significantly higher, so we're at almost 2% bicycles as a share of all accidents, and pedestrians about 1.4% as a share of accidents. And again, we're giving the comparative data, reflecting that other towns have similar challenges that we do, like seasonality, et cetera. How come? Why? There are some theories of the case, but no solid answers yet. So, one potential answer, we believe, lies in the fact that the largest cluster of accidents are Davis Straits area and 28 through T-Ticket, by far. Way outnumber other accident sites in our town that we all know about. Do we have more J-1 workers, maybe? Do we have more commuters walking or cycling to jobs that are, you know, along 28? Do we have more day trippers in season than other Cape towns? So, our next step is to dig deeper into the data, focusing on these hotspots, because we think that if you were to take those hotspots out, you would normalize where we are relative to the other towns. I would note also that we all know about the Davis Straits that were made, improvements that were made by the state this year, and that data is not reflected in here, because that was 2024, and this is 2023. So, one of the things we want to do is, I'm sure you all have the exact same issue, you get a lot of requests thrown at you, want to make sure we're focusing on the hotspots and addressing those hotspots.
I'm going to save my question for the end.
Just a sampling of some of the projects we've done in the last year. We've regularly worked with DPW, both for tactical and strategic work. So, with strategic work, we started out beginning with DPW, and it's been a great process, I have to say. We've worked with the community, Quissett Harbor and other community areas, on the Chapter 90, Section 17C and 18B work. That, Section 17C is the work to lower the speed limit in thickly settled areas from 30 to 25. 18B is the safety zones. You may recall a meeting we had recently about making the beaches safety zones. Quissett Harbor, going down to the knob, is already a safety zone. We attend the monthly traffic advisory committee meeting to represent neighborhood concerns and bike-ped concerns, make sure that voice is heard, and that's been great. We work with Cape Cod Commission. Minot Street had a traffic study done for cars, but it didn't include bicycles and pedestrians, and they have a unique issue with volume going to the SSA parking lot. So, we engaged with Cape Cod Commission to get counts done for Minot Street of bikes, pets, literally interns clicking, you know, buttons. We had a lengthy written response to the Saxon Partner Traffic Study that was requested by ZBA. They asked us to respond. So, we responded specifically around safety, the median speed on Sandwich Road, which is 48, so you can imagine the 85th percentile, and other safety issues in that area. And then, we supported West Falmouth Village Association and partnered with them around improving safety on 28A, Chapcoy, and Old Dock Road. So, that area is, you know, it's by the skin of our teeth, I feel. We don't have more accidents in that area. You've got clueless cyclists running straight across the road on the bike path, you have cars clueless whipping out onto 28A. It's, so they've been doing a lot of things, and we've been engaged with them. We started a project, it's very early, to create a connector for East-West. I'm an East Falmouth resident myself. There's no protected way to get from East Falmouth to downtown, to the, well, actually, anywhere, to the beach, and we feel really strongly that we need to start putting some stakes in the ground for an East-West connector. So, we met with DPW, and our committee had also talked about Brick Hill. So, Brick Hill sees a ton of school commuters, and we believe with the Y going in, we'll get even more people riding their bikes to the Y. And this connector would be from Gifford to where the state road picks up, right before you get to 28A, that on-ramp is, that area of Brick Hill is state-owned. It would be on either side of the road. It would create a connector for the school, the Y, commuters. We think it'd be a huge benefit to the town. We've met with DPW, with the principal of Falmouth High, who is very interesting, he had a bunch of takes on it, one of which is, the track team can only like run in a circle on the, you know, in the stadium or in the woods. This would be great, you know, for them to actually have a safe place to run. And then he also noted that a lot of, a lot of his students are recent arrivals to Falmouth, and the family might be mom and dad working, one car, and, you know, the kid's got to get to school. We met with the team for the YMCA, just to make sure we understood what was going on there, and were they okay? And we met with Christ Lutheran Church, that's a church right in front of where the YMCA is going to go. Our next steps is we want to establish a subcommittee with high school students on it, preponderance of high school students and parents, and apply for a Safe Roots to School preliminary design grant this October. So, the students will actually help shape the grant. We will do the first draft, and DPW will, of course, you know, edit and amend it, because we made a promise to DPW that we'd make this as light impact as possible. We'll do, we'll do the writing, you can edit it. And the preliminary design, once that gets done, then you would start the round of public hearings, you know, et cetera. But we're very excited about this. It's going to be a big focus of our committee to get a significant East-West connector installed in our town. Some fun stuff, we sponsored a spring community ride. I saw Wayne Linkfelter today in another meeting, but I was telling him that one of our committee members, so, spring, you know, it's chilly, chilly day, and so we were looking for some indoor place where people could gather at the end of the ride and have, you know, hot chocolate and some cookies, et cetera. So, we ended up using Depot Station with the blessing of EDIC. It was a great location, a fun event, and I had to share the T-shirt on the cranksters, the Cape's baddest bikers, a bunch of old guys that ride bikes. No offense to old guys. We were the bike lead for the Walk Bike to School Day at T-Ticket School, which is a great event, make sure that kids have a safe experience getting to the school and back. And that's just like a little highlight. So, what's next? The biggest priority is the Eversource work. That is the huge priority. You guys know I've been up here before and said, over 300,000 trips a year are taken on the Shining Sea Bike Way, and this jewel in our crown has to be left in pristine condition. We've been meeting with DPW and Eversource. Eversource is going to be at our meeting on September 4. None of us have seen construction plans yet, which, for me, if you think about Trust but Verify, I'd like to see the construction plans and make sure that what's been promised is there. I'll tell you guys that there was a meeting this morning that averted a manhole cover being installed in the middle of the bike path, which in 2021, we were promised no manhole covers in the middle, all bumpouts. And luckily, a solution was found, but it's a situation where we have to stay really focused on top of it, because otherwise, stuff just slides by. Longer term, we'll continue to focus on serving the community and on our goals. So, normally, we hold goal-setting like right about now, but Eversource is going to take priority, so we'll push it off another month. How can you help? Honestly, the most important thing is to hold Eversource to their promises. So, they did relocate the telephone poles on Palmer Ave. They did take off the kind of weird nail, did you guys ever see that, where they nailed the old pole to the, yeah, so that's all done. The sidewalk itself is rough, needs to be repaved, and they're aware of that. But the bike way itself, it will do us no good if it's trenched and pitted and bad-looking. You know, it's a huge attraction and drives a lot of revenue for not only the bike rental companies, but anybody around town that sells food or something to drink, or et cetera. And I'd ask you to think about us, if they are appearing in And I'd ask you to think about us if they are appearing in front of you and there's anything about Bike Way. I mean, I watch the agendas, but make sure we attend so that we all know the promises are being kept. Finally, I'd like to give out two special thanks. I'd like to thank Mr. Mascali. He's been a great advisor to us, including, that's not a good idea, sometimes you got to hear that, so that was, that's been very helpful. And I'd like to thank Mr. McConerty. This morning could have gone so badly, and he, you know, basically jumped in, let them know what was what and what needed to happen, and he came up with the idea that solved the problem of the manhole cover, which would have created a, you know, a permanent safety hazard for us as a town.
Where was that, where was that manhole cover to be?
Kind of near the SSA lot, where there's those two retaining walls. I think they do have a significant problem in that they can't, you know, make a bump out there, but you don't just like go, oh, yeah, well, we, you know, all the others are bumped out except this one. Hope you guys are okay with that, you know, they were kind of trying to. But he did a fantastic job, as always, and came up with, actually came up with the solution that was implemented, so. And that is all of my prepared remarks.
Questions from the board. Mr. Brown?
I'm very interested in your crash data, and thank you for bringing that. Would you think that maybe those 300,000 trips down the Bike Way are contributing to that, why we have higher volume than other towns?
I do, so we don't have database evidence for that. That might be something to explore. It's just so that the Bike Way is so far away from the two giant clusters of traffic accidents that, you know, we're kind of trying to look for what's happening on 28 and Davis Straits. Anecdotally, I'm sure you guys see this, I see people riding in dark clothing with no lights regularly.
I'm curious, I'm wondering, I know we have a lot of crash data for Davis Straits for vehicular versus pedestrian and bicycle, but I'm wondering if the numbers include bicycle versus pedestrian possibly? Would that be a?
Well, then, so first of all, the numbers are underreported because it has to be a police submitted report to get into this. And a lot of people don't submit reports. So bicycles are actually legally in the state of Massachusetts, supposed to file a report if you've been in an accident, you know, you didn't call the police, you didn't need emergency services, but few do that. So I think there's underreporting. On the Bike Way itself, again, somebody would have to report it for us to see it, and I haven't really seen that. I've seen poor behavior, just like we, you know, we seem to be in an era of aggressive driving, aggressive cycling, and then, you know, whatever you could call the extendable leashes with dogs.
I guess we'll have to look into those numbers because that is kind of concerning.
Yeah.
Mr. Mascali?
Would you like to speak a little bit about electric bikes and, you know, what's going on with them, your concerns and so forth?
Sure. I didn't put that in here because, because of differing vacation schedules, we haven't come to a resolution as a committee. However, the US is kind of unique in that, first of all, compared to other countries, our e-bikes are easily modifiable. So there are three classes of e-bike, a pedal assist that will go up to a certain miles per hour, non-pedal assist, and then a pedal assist that goes up to 30 miles an hour is a class three. The Army Corps of Engineers has banned class threes on their canal path. I'm sure if anybody fishes or has been there, you know, it's loaded with guys on bikes, you know, spotting. So our committee is looking at potentially finding a way to ban class threes on the Bike Way because that is, the hazard is going over 15. If you're going 15 miles an hour, you can see what's happening, stop in time, et cetera. We have not yet reached a resolution. One of the issues is the enforceability. We currently have a 15 mile an hour speed limit. So that's one of the things we're kind of struggling with.
Go ahead, Ms. Golds.
Quick question on the East-West connector idea, which, as a former resident of East Falmouth, I strongly, strongly appreciate. I know you said preliminary design will come later, but just initial thinking, are you thinking a separated bike, bike and pedestrian pathway, bike lane?
Oh, thank you for, so according to engineering at DPW, there's enough right-of-way on that road to do what Mastott prefers, which is you have a curb, you have six inches of vegetation, and then you have a 12-foot multi-use path on the other side of that, on both sides. So you'd have a two-way multi-use path on the right, a two-way multi-use path on the left. We are keen to do that, having had, you know, my kids are older now, but I can't imagine a teen crossing the road to ride on a bike path, you know? They'll ride whatever's convenient to them. So that would be the design, that's the idea. Of course, that's, you know, just in initial looking at the easements and drawings, et cetera.
Thank you.
Encouraging.
Any comments or comments? I love the idea of the school kids getting on bikes. I know Bob Porter at Lawrence has done that for years and years and years.
Yes.
And I certainly hope that that program expands.
I would like to see more of that.
I think starting at the younger ages is a really great idea.
Yeah.
Get kids used to it and making it sort of normal transportation. So thank you so much for your work.
Thank you.
Anything else from the board?
Thank you, it's a great report.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, appreciate it. I could just yank the flash drive out and not cause trouble.
Yeah.
Wait, wait, one second, Mr. Fenner, and I'll recognize you. I can't say, here we go.
Thank you.
Mr. Fenner.
Hold on one second.
Of course.
Mark Fenneren, I'm on the ZBA and with one of our recent projects. I did a lot of investigating on the traffic issues, safety issues, and it led me to a study that the county did on the 50 most dangerous intersections on Cape Cod. And I spoke with Peter McConerty a couple of times and the guys at the county a couple of times, and they led me to a guy from the Cape Cod Times, I think it was the September 10th, 2023, in the Cape Cod Times, I believe his name was Armstrong, but he did some old-fashioned reporting, and he took all the 50 most dangerous intersections and he plotted them out, and he found out that the most dangerous stretch of road on Cape Cod is from Jones Road to Fresh Pond Road. So you might want to read that and investigate, and then there's also the 50 most dangerous intersections, but going through that and other things, I think it might be warranted, and I'm not going to get into your business, but if you like had two paths, one on Brick Hill Road and maybe one closer to the water, because that is such a dangerous intersection, if you could keep people off it, I think it would be better, but you're going to find, it's not a very long article, but it's kind of interesting reading, and that would explain why your biographs are the highest in Falmouth because it is in fact the most dangerous stretch of road on Cape Cod.
Thank you, Mr. Fenneren. Okay, we're going to move into the report from the Solid Waste Advisory Committee. Mr. Robinson? And you have 15 minutes.
Peter, if you could queue it up and help me with the.
That's pretty concerning data.
Thank you very much for this opportunity for the Solid Waste Advisory Committee to meet with you. We're a seven-member committee. Last year when we were here, we were only a six-member committee, but we got a seventh, and we're at full strength and working very hard and having lots of things to do. Our role in the community is three-part. It's to take a leading role in helping the town maintain and enhance the solid waste management program, to encourage sound means and methods to reduce trash tonnage by smart recycling, greater reuse, food scrap separation, and reduced packaging, and to operate with the help of our amazing volunteers to pick up the litter shop. Some of our accomplishments, and these aren't necessarily the Solid Waste Committee's accomplishments. This is, these are Falmouth's accomplishments, of which we are a part of, but we're partnering in every case with others within the community. And here are the first one, we're really with the entire community, that Falmouth has reduced curbside trash tonnage by 7% in 2023 compared to 2018. And because of the bump during COVID where there was much more trash and much more recycling because people were at home, this represents, you know, change over the last about year and a half or so of an accomplishment, and we, we want to make that a trend that will continue and actually continue to build over time. But it's, it's really a tremendous accomplishment. The schools, the schools initiated school-wide cafeteria food scrap composting, which they started in September at Mullen Hall, and by the end of the school year, we're doing it in all of the schools. Another thing we were involved with was kickstarting the Barnstable County Upper Cape Town's Regional Composting Facility Initiative at Joint Base Cape Cod. You recall that the county did studies back in 2020, 2021 on the future of solid waste management within Barnstable County? And they had some ideas for regional composting facilities, and then nothing, there was no movement on that by the county. About a year and, about a year ago, we contacted Commissioner Forrest. You recall that Commissioner Forrest was at our, at the meeting last year when we made our presentation, and he activated the county and the upper, the four Upper Cape communities, including Falmouth. There is a grant was obtained by the county to get a feasibility study, having a consultant do a feasibility study for looking at Joint Base Cape Cod for a regional compost facility. Mary Reither, our solid waste coordinator, is a member of the working committee along with a representative from Bourne and the county, and that is moving along, and the consultant is underway, and Mike, Mike was at the, at the, the Joint Base Cape Cod Community Meeting last week, where we got a good, very good briefing from the county and from the consultant on that. Swap Shop hosted 12,000 visits in 2023, accounting for diverting an estimated 45 tons of trash from the landfill. This year was the first time we could actually estimate the tonnage that the Swap Shop represented because they've done a couple of different way out, way out days, where they've weighed everything that, you know, that patrons were taking home with them. So we've got a measure of it, 45,000 tons is a good deal, and it's just continuing to build. The town, each year qualifies for grants from the Mass DEP Recycling Dividend Program. Last year, we were awarded $48,500, and recall, a good chunk of that will be going towards the salary of the Recycling and Solid Waste Coordinator starting this, just this past July. So it's a very important grant that we receive, and if I recall correctly, of the, something like 200 towns in the state that participate in this, we were the 13th largest grant or recipient of grant. So it's a substantial, it's a substantial grant, recognizing a lot of the work that's already being done within the town. The food scrap program, you read about it in the newspaper a couple of weeks ago. We thank Doug and Bob to join us for the celebration of that, but the food scrap drop-offs at the Waste Management Facility, comparing May and July to 2023 to 2024, there was an increase of 70, by 70% of the number of people dropping off per month, and it's, it's an indication that the interest in food scrap separation is growing, and of course, it's food scrap separation that will lead us to reducing our trash tonnage. The Falmouth Enterprise, in a, in a member of the community, initiated Recycling Tip of the Week that's been going on now for, I think, almost a year, and it's been very well-received, and we're very appreciative of the enterprise for taking on this, this initiative, and, and for the opportunity to write talking trash every month. It's, it's really our best means for messaging to the community. And then in, in bold letters, after many, many, many years of effort, the Recycling and Solid Waste Coordinator position, which became a new position at halftime about three years ago, was made full-time by you all back in January and went into effect in July, and for that, we are ever so much appreciative because now Mary has twice as much time to do the many things that she's working on and the town needs. Some questions going forward, you know, where are we going with solid waste management? We have ideas, we, the Solid Waste Advisory Committee have ideas, DPW has ideas, but these aren't decisions that we're going to be making, that we, we, the committee is going to be making. It'll be you all and town meeting and administration who will be making decisions. Should Falmouth issue a standard trash cart, as we have very successfully with recycling carts? How big should that cart be? Remember, there's a lot of discussion at town meeting about how big these carts should be. Should they be 64 gallon, 48 gallon, 32 gallon? When does it get rolled out? Adopt the states, do we adopt the state's 30% tonnage reduction goal by 2030 or not? Or some other goal? How much support do we support the county's Upper Cape Regional Composting Facility effort at Joint Base Cape Cod? Do we go all in on food scrap composting? What will that entail? How do we reach and engage the entire Falmouth community? Is there enhanced role for the Waste Management Facility beyond what it's already doing and accomplishing in reducing our waste tonnage? And then, of course, the money. How much will it cost? What are our alternatives? What are our choices? What is the timing? These are a number of the questions that we as a community, you as the government and as the administration, will be having, will be working with one way or another as we go forward because trash and recycling is only getting more expensive, and there's other, you know, other great values in reducing our trash tonnage, greenhouse gases and the like. We've got two requests. The first one's in light of all those questions and the other questions that there could be, that the Select Board and the administration take immediate steps to facilitate development of Falmouth's first solid waste management plan. A lot of good things are already going on in town. You know, we've got the second drop-off, the number, which is tremendously successful, and we're going to have to actually find a way to grow the capacity there because it's, it is so successful. But it's kind of like we're throwing things up on the wall and seeing what sticks. We really need to work this within a plan, and it is well thought out. So when you make decisions on size of containers or how much we want to pay for something, that it's well thought out, that we've learned from what other, what other communities have done and what they're succeeded at and what hasn't worked in other communities, and what we think can work here from talking to people, getting the public involved in, in the planning process. So that's our number one request, and we request it now. The next waste management contract or curbside collection contract is less than three years away. There's the opportunity to put a lot of the things we want to do within that contract, or to time it with that contract, especially particularly with what's going on at Joint Base Cape Cod and the possibility of a food scrap, a composting facility right there. And the second ask is sort of an internal ask, is we're a seven-member committee, we're very busy, we've got, we've got actually really pleased that there's other members of the community who are attending our meetings and, and contributing, and so we would like to become a nine-member committee. And, you know, we, you know, we've talked to Mike Renshaw about that, and I think he's, I don't know if you've already looked into it or you will be looking into it, what the authorization when the committee was created was, which we, as far as we could find, it was created as a nine-member committee many, many years ago. We don't know why it became seven, but it is, and we're interested in becoming nine, so we've got more people doing more things. We've got a lot of folks to, to, in organizations and institutions within to acknowledge and appreciate. The schools, staff and students that did such a great job in getting into food scrap separation and composting, but especially Carmela Mayuski, who's the outreach coordinator that we work with. She's been great in teaming with Mary Reither and our committee. Of course, Department of Public Works, Peter, and especially Mary Reither. You all, the Select Board and the administration, and town meeting. You all, the Select Board and the administration, and town meeting. The Swap Shop patrons are amazing volunteers and the very, very welcoming gate, the gate staff. They do a very good job of, of instructing, of getting information. The amount of data that we collect, that they collect, is really, really helpful to us as we look to how, you know, to understand the waste management within our town. It's, it's very, very good. And of course, with the initiative of the County Extension Service for Joint Base Cape Cod and especially Carrie, Carrie Parcell, who's carrying the ball for the county. One of the things, before I get to this last slide, one of the things that we will be working on, in fact, we have a meeting on Wednesday, Mary, Carmella, a couple of other members of our committee and myself. Now that the school, now that school's starting again and the kids will be doing that food separation in the caf, in the cafeterias, what about at home? What can we bring to the families, to the parents and the grandparents and so forth? So that to interest them and to excite them about composting, backyard composting at home? Because backyard composting, as much as, is, is a very, very important part of this whole thing. Backyard composting or taking it to the Waste Management Facility or minimizing the amount of, of food scraps and food waste that they generate by eating the leftovers or whatever the case may be. So that's going to be a very important initiative and we hope a successful one this, this year. I wanted to leave you with an excerpt from a resident's email received last week by DPW's Recycling and Solid Waste Coordinator, Mary Reither. This resident wrote with some suggestions for the new drop-off, but she, she started by saying, "Thank you very much for offering this valuable service. I'm so proud of the ways Falmouth considers the environment." And I don't think she was just talking about solid waste here. I think she was talking about the many ways that Falmouth considers the environment. And we very much thank you for this opportunity to talk and hope you've got some questions or?
Questions? Yes, Ms. Goldstone?
Two questions. I was going to ask if you'd considered a pathway to a three-bin curbside system where one of those is actually composting food scraps, but it sounds like maybe that would be part of a, a solid waste management plan.
That exactly would be something that we'd be looking at, wanting to learn from what other towns have done, looking at the costs, looking at how, how to get the messaging out, not just get the messaging out, but to engage the entire community. So you don't get ten or twenty percent of the people participate, or the households participating, that you get forty and fifty and sixty or more percent. So yes, we, that would be a part of the plan, as well as looking at other alternatives to that.
Can I tag on to that question? Do you have on your website how to do the food scrap recycling, what to do with it?
On the solid waste, on the DPW's website, there is really great detail.
Okay, because I've been asked that. Thank you.
Mary Reither has been, again, with more time, Mary Reither has been increasingly able to, to add things in to that website. And we've got some very good instructions for the new drop-off, very good instructions.
Excellent. Thank you. Go ahead.
My other question was, you mentioned the, the trends over time and the bump from COVID. Was that a bump and has it gone back down? Because I could imagine a lot of us formed habits during COVID that haven't gone back to pandemic usuals.
Trash tonnage in Falmouth and really every place, not just Falmouth, trash tonnage in Falmouth, it was up seventeen percent during COVID. But so was recycling, up seventeen percent, because people were eating at home and not eating at work or eating at school or going out to dinner. But that, that has gone down and it's gone down now lower than it was in two thousand and eighteen.
Okay. Mr. Brown and then Mr. Muscally.
Alan, any idea how we're doing on our contamination of the recycling?
Qualitatively, yes. We, we did, you know, several months ago, or several months ago, and a year ago, we did some surveys of curbside. And we probably, in this, this go-around, we probably did, I don't know, three hundred, four hundred residences on, on recycling, on recycling day. And, you know, only about forty-five percent, if I remember right, of the households had everything right. But if you actually looked at what was wrong, it was a plastic bag here. It was a, you know, a peanut butter container that had too much peanut butter there. Things like, you know, ones and twos for the most part. I've also been up at the Waste Management Facility where NOSIT, the collection trucks dump their load into a, 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 a roll-off that then gets taken to the processing facility. And I've actually watched it come out. And you know, it's, I think we do, I think we do very, really well. We just need to be doing a little bit better. Because what I've seen is, you know, here's something there, something there, something there, but it is not, you know, there's, it's not atrocious at all. One thing we do see more of, and we would love to reduce from our recycling, is redeemable bottles and cans. Particularly the bottles, because a beer bottle, soda bottle weighs almost a half a pound. So rather than the residents getting, getting six cents, I'm saying fi, five cents, getting five cents for redeeming them, we're paying, we, you know, we, the taxpayers are paying about three cents to have them recycled. And if we could get that glass, and the glass is one of the heaviest, heaviest part of trash. If we can get those redeemables out of the trash and out of the recycling, we'd save some money.
We're still paying for tonnage for recycling?
Oh, we pay for recycling at, at our ear. The, the cost per ton to Falmouth for the, in essence, the tipping fee, not the collection, but for taking it to the processing. I can't, it's shifted between a hundred and twenty-five dollars a ton, a hundred and forty-five dollars a ton. It is very expensive. It's substantially more than the, our tipping fee for trash.
That's kind of crazy.
It's crazy. But that is, you know, the markets, the markets are down. And I don't know, we don't know if our processor, how efficient that processor is. We've been trying to get a tour. We had a tour of three, a few years ago, been trying to get a tour and they keep putting us off and putting us off. But we're trying to get a better understanding of why it is so expensive.
Yeah, so I was, I thought that was supposed to come back down.
Mr. Muscally, I'm going to let you go ahead. You had a question?
The same question as Selectman Brown had, but what can be done to educate people about proper, you know, curbside recycling? What should go in, what shouldn't go in, what, what could we be doing or getting the message out?
Well, we, we had, we had a townwide mailer, I guess, I think it was with the Water Bill, I think it was in two thousand and nineteen, with the standard sheet from, you know, it's a, it's a state DEP-produced sheet. That's one way. We rely a lot on the newspaper. If every, if my, our wish is that everyone in town had a subscription to the Falmouth Enterprise. Because when they see, you know, the, the front, you know, the front page articles about, about this, and so would they. But they, and they see the, the, the tip of the week and they retalk, they have the opportunity to retalking trash. But through the school, I'm hoping that a lot, we can reach a lot of the younger families in town via the schools or via the schoolchildren and then taking it home through the PTOs perhaps and working with that.
And you did send out a, I think it was a, a three-fold piece of paper that, you know, tells you everything that can go in, that can't.
Right.
That goes up on your refrigerator every week to just double check because it's helpful.
I think what we need is have one of those for every bin and have it laminated right on the top of the lid. Or maybe a bumper sticker that says no plastic bags, some kind of thing that's right on the can. Because we got so many people who come here and rent a house and they just throw everything in there. I find trash and all kinds of stuff in the recycling bin from renters.
We, we need to get more publicity about it for sure and effective messaging. And so we're open. We're, we, we will learn from anyone who has a good idea of how we can get this and how we can pay for it, if we need to pay for it and so forth.
I know at one of the meetings that I attended as your liaison, you, we had talked about the local TV station and doing a, a short tutorial on that as well. How far did you get with that?
We, we haven't connected, but as I was walking in, I was talking with our, I guess, the associate producer, Eileen, as I walked in and said, "We've got to talk." And she said, "Yes, we've got to talk." So we, we will get there.
That would be helpful. But, oh, go ahead.
If you do the video, make sure you put it out on social media.
Yes, yes. And I will add that Mary Reith, if you remember, about two years ago, we were begging for Mary Reither to be able to have through DPW access to Facebook. And Peter, when he was interim, interim manager, made that happen. And we use, and Mary does use Facebook and it is very, very helpful. So we very much appreciate that.
Thank you very much. It was very comprehensive.
Great report. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alan. Okay, we're going to move on to our capital presentation, the capital plan. Mr. Renshaw.
I'm hooked on these now. No, no, please stop.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Select Board. I'm excited to be here tonight. This is actually my second capital budget in fourteen months. So very proud, very excited to present the fiscal year two thousand and twenty-five capital plan, proposed capital plan. I want to begin by explaining and reiterating, because I think we talked about this last year as well. This is, this is a long process. The process of developing this FY twenty-five capital plan began back in April with my budget instructions. We sent a memo out to all the department heads. They had until mid-July to submit all of their requests. You have in your packet tonight a copy of that detailed, including all the departmental request forms, a lot of detail in that. I'm proud to be here to present it, but I'm also excited because in fifteen years of doing budgeting, it's the capital budgeting that I think, that's where the rubber really does hit the road. It really ties, there's a nexus between a capital budget and the governing body, the Select Board's strategic plans and priorities. You can see that nexus. It's obvious. When you look at the summary sheet in your packets of the FY twenty-five capital plan, you can kind of see the categories, the general government, the public safety, the public works. So you kind of, you can see that connection between your goals and the strategic plan and what the departments are putting together. So again, want to reiterate, long process culminating with the FinCom really detailed review. And as you all know, this step tonight basically places us in a position to forward the proposed FY twenty-five capital plan to the Finance Committee for their more detailed review. And having gone through that process last year, I can attest that it is a very detailed review. FinCom does a great job. They have representatives assigned to each department and they vet to the nth degree the requests. So with that, want to talk a little bit about, I mentioned the strategic priorities and how these capital plan budgets, capital budgets are reflective and illustrative of the governing body's desires. As with any good plan, it all begins with a solid set of guiding principles and priorities. And those are, what you see here before you tonight, the five kind of pillars represented in the fiscal policy that Select Board recently revised, I think it was back in April of this year, there's a revision to that fiscal policy. But as you can see, imminent threats of health and safety of citizens, employees and property, preservation of existing operations, legal requirement of federal or state agencies, any, any requirements imposed by the feds or the state, improvement of infrastructure hugely important. And lastly, and not leastly, improvement in the effectiveness and the efficiency of how we deliver services to the community. As town manager, Peter and I daily are looking at ways, exploring ways to become more efficient, more effective at how we deliver services to the community, to the residents and businesses in the community. The big overarching message with this presentation tonight is that we're going to continue to do, I think, some of the great things that we started last year. Let me say this first. Fifteen years I've been doing capital and operational budgeting. When I came here to Falmouth last year, I was immediately impressed by the, the amount of attention and detail that was in the capital plan. Honestly, I think, not just because I'm the town manager, I think this capital plan is probably the most detailed, realistic plan that I've seen. And there's a lot of work that goes into making it that. And I want to hats off to the entire finance team, Ed Santeo, the Finance Director, obviously, and Peter, because they really put together a plan, I think, that is realistic and workable. So, and again, going through the plan, you can see the, the elements that we've added, including looking at all of the proposed resources, capital spending, the funding sources from free cash, which, as you know, typically that makes up the bulk of the, of the, of the funding, grants, community preservation, borrowing. We're continuing the path of requiring a project manager being assigned to each project. That enhances the accountability and makes it easier for us to monitor and track progress towards these projects, once they're approved. Perhaps there was an issue over the years where projects would be approved for funding and the wheels weren't moving quickly enough. Assigning a project manager within the capital plan enhances that, that accountability. And lastly, I think one of the other great additions that we made last year, we plan to continue this year, and I mentioned it earlier, that nexus or connection between the strategic plan and this document, which is a policy document, is making that connection. So we require, as part of each department's request forms, you can literally see a column in there that requires them to fill out which of the seven strategic priorities of the Select Board this project touches. Could be one or more. As I mentioned earlier, typically free cash is the largest revenue or revenue stream, funding stream that we, we rely upon within the capital budget. As you know, we have a very strong reserve this year, as we had last year. We're always looking for ways to grow and enhance and increase that reserve to levels similar to other communities on the Cape. I think last year, Peter presented a slide that showed, yes, although Falmouth free cash levels were high in relation to other communities on the Cape, they were not necessarily where, where they needed to be. So we're always looking, the messages, we're always looking to minimize the use of free cash as we're developing this capital plan. And limit, limit that free cash spending and boosting our reserves. I want to mention, although we don't have the certified numbers and we won't for a while, we're expected to be, our free cash certification, per the Finance Office, is expected to be over twenty-two million dollars at the close of the fiscal year. For reference perspective, at the close of last year, the results of FY twenty-three, so the, the free cash amounts that we had to work with in FY twenty-four, were twenty-three point eight million dollars. So again, we're looking at another solid year with regards to free cash. Finance Office, Ed did a tremendous job shaking the, the trees, so to speak, in terms of monies that were sitting there, appropriated monies that had been, not been spent. And I'll go into a little bit more detail on that as well. But again, that's another funding source that we show in the capital plan. Article appropriation, previous articles that had been, had been approved and funded. And again, grants, special revenues or other funding. So the bottom line rule, to maximize the use of non-free cash so that we can build up those reserves again. The following slides, I'm going to show you some very specific examples of that. And again, although you see here in regards to this proposed FY twenty-five capital plan, we're proposing utilizing fifteen point seven million dollars in free cash. And again, I like to give kind of a perspective, last year, if the FY twenty-four capital plan relied on about eleven and a half million dollars. So there's, there's an increase in the reliance upon free cash with this proposed budget. And again, you've been provided kind of that overview and summary of the capital plan and your budget. And you can see the bottom half of that document lists all the different funding sources, so you can see that clearly. Community Preservation Act, a little over three million dollars. Last year, again, for, for perspective, about three point three million dollars in CPC monies were utilized. Want to point out that about the budget, as you see it, the proposed budget tonight represents eighty point six million dollars in funding. There were some requests that were not funded to the tune of about one point two million dollars. Departments did a very good job, I think, vetting internally before they presented to Peter and I and Ed. But there were about one point two million dollars in projects that were not funded, not recommended for funding. And you can see that in your capital, your detailed capital plan. There's a column that says requested and then proposed. So that if the requested number goes from a number to zero, it was not recommended for funding out of my office. And again, transfers from existing articles, that's, that's the shaking of the trees, so to speak, trying to find money under the cushions, which Ed did a tremendous job last year, working with his team. A hundred and eighty-four thousand four hundred dollars roughly. And unappropriated article funding is, is proposed to be used this year. And again, to give perspective, we used about one point three million dollars last year of unappropriated monies, transfers from existing articles, I should say. And the next slide, we have one borrowing item. And although it's only one, it's a big one, obviously, the T-ticket path in Northeast Merivista Construction, the sewer system extension. Last year, when we were talking about the project and looking at the capital plan and projecting, the picture was incomplete. We didn't have detailed engineering. We weren't far enough in design, I should say. So what was projected at forty-one and a half million dollars has, has grown to about sixty million dollars. Want to point out, this is not a November town meeting appropriation request. This is going to be coming in, in April, but during fiscal year twenty-five. So April town meeting, we'll be, we'll be hearing this proposed borrowing article. So one item, a big one for borrowing. I want to go over some of the major highlights within the proposed FY- I want to go over some of the major highlights within the proposed FY25 capital plan budget. Water main replacements. Obviously, this is an ongoing project, an ongoing program, I should say, with regards to replacing our antiquated and leaking, unfortunately, water mains. Last year's spending was about $2.3 million, was projected. I think we came in, actually, a little bit less than that. We're actually trying to push that needle forward, and we're shooting for that $3 million per year expenditure, like we talked about a couple of years ago when this program was put into place. So, we're trying to add about $700,000 in additional spending so that we can get up to speed on that water line replacement. The completion of the John Neal Fields, again, this is going to come before the April Town Meeting, but it's going to be part of this fiscal year, and we're looking at about $2.5 million to complete that project. We do have a placeholder for urine diversion. As you know, there's been a working group that's been working with MasTec for months, trying to answer a lot of questions that came out of the Finance Committee. Although they've been making great progress, we feel like it's probably not going to be ready, so we're looking at an April 2025 Town Meeting for that project. And again, we're programming about $1.9 million for that, but we'll have better numbers as we have more answers, quite honestly. Road maintenance construction funds, Chapter 90 funds, a little bit of an uptick. I think there's a typo here. It lists 1.6. Actually, in your budgets, you can see $1.7 million is projected in expenditures from Chapter 90. Fire engine and equipment, fire rescue department is requesting a new engine. This was always in the plan. The problem is, you probably know, with fire apparatus, the longer you wait, the more expensive they get, and oftentimes, the longer lead time. So, the lead time has grown to, I think, over 18 months now, unfortunately, once we placed the order. And the price tag has gone from about $900,000 to about $1.3 million with equipment. So, that's programmed in the FY25 capital plan. Outfall permitting, huge project. We're looking to spend about $430,000 in that. Aquaculture, and again, looking at the strategic plan, how we tie this together, there's this specific section within the strategic plan that talks about protecting our natural resources, and reducing nitrogen is certainly one of those initiatives. So, we're looking to spend $450,000 to expand our aquaculture program. Phased water meter replacements. Matt Lannan, our Water Superintendent, has been very diligent, looking to reduce, enhance the efficiency and effectiveness of our meters. You probably all heard the term non-rev water. As meters get older, they turn, the venturi turns slower, so you're not capturing the true use of water. And also, we're looking to do, probably utilize some new technology with regards to, is it radio, Peter, or automatic meter? I think it's radio.
Radio.
Radio reading technologies. So, again, making us more effective in terms of how we read the meters and more accurate. And lastly, I wanted to talk a little bit about police vehicle replacement. The Police Department is requesting six additional new vehicles to address some of the department needs. Traditionally, they receive less funding than that, but Chief Laurie, in discussing with Peter and I and Ed, believes that the six-vehicle request is going to accomplish two things. Less wear and tear on vehicles by having more in the fleet so that they're not wearing out vehicles. And more importantly, I think, Chief Laurie is looking, is working with his command staff to identify ways to perhaps add additional districts beyond the districts that they currently have to reduce response times throughout the town. So, adding these additional vehicles, if approved, would accomplish that. So, just to conclude and then open up for questions, as I mentioned before, as with last year's capital plan, we're really trying to seek a balance between maintaining the equipment and the infrastructure that we have within all the limitations of funding availability and capacity to carry out projects. The capacity has become an issue, and we have to be very mindful of that. And that's why the departments are required to assign that program project manager who's required to sit down with DPW to make sure that we're all on the same page with regards to the timeline for getting these projects underway. If there's an engineering burden upon DPW as a result of one of these projects, we need to know that upfront so that we can properly plan for it, because as you all know, these projects need to be accomplished within three years typically. We do believe that these proposals represent the very upper limit of what we can spend while maintaining and hopefully building, again, those free cash reserves, which is vitally important. And I wanted to say again, I can't state this strongly enough, this work of about three and a half, four months, leading to tonight's presentation, and ultimately, the Finance Committee review, has been many, many countless hours of staff time, developing their requests and vetting those requests internally within the departments and divisions, and then presenting, each department, each division director presenting to Peter, Ed, and I their requests. So, many, many hours over many, many months have gone into this process. And lastly, we're seeking your vote tonight to submit this capital improvement plan, the proposed FY25 capital improvement plan, to the Finance Committee so that that group can begin their very detailed review. And as I said earlier, they're chomping at the bit to get started on the review. So, with that, I'll stop and answer any questions you might have.
Any questions from the board?
Did you practice that, Mike? Because that was 15 minutes on the button.
Was it? No, I did not.
Well, I mean, I think we had a lot of our questions answered Saturday. I'm glad we had the preview of this, so I'm anxious to get it off to the Finance Committee.
I would agree with you.
Yeah, one possible suggestion in the future. It is clear when you go through each of the individual proposals where it notes the alignment to strategic plan and gives the rationale, that alignment. But you've got those seven pillars of the strategic plan and the five pillars of the fiscal policy, and it would be wonderful to just see kind of a quick summary, right, along those lines of where are we actually spending our money? Is it in those seven strategic plan elements? Is it elsewhere, just as a quick summary of where we're spending? Because obviously, the categories that are in the summary sheet are the accounting categories that need to be there, but they don't give you, in a quick glance, that alignment to strategic plan.
Perfect. We will put that into place.
Renshaw, you looking for a motion?
Unless there are any other questions or comments?
No.
Renshaw, make a motion to submit the proposed capital improvement plan to the Finance Committee as discussed by the Town Manager.
I would second. We'll both second that.
Okay, we'll have a second, second. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion amongst the board?
Just comment, that was, again, a very thorough, excellent presentation of the budget, and anybody that wants to go online and look at it, it's pretty impressive, the detail and how each department makes their case for the need. Very clear.
And has a person directed to be responsible for it.
That's the key.
Great improvement.
For me, that's the key, because that's how you get things done, right? Once the money's a lot. The other pieces, I would agree that it's the most comprehensive capital plan that I've seen. That includes everything, and I think that's really important. So, I will go back. We have a motion and a second, second. Any further discussion amongst the board? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor. Aye. Unanimous. Thank you, Mr. Renshaw. Okay, we're going to move on to consider the request from the Affirmative Action Committee for a new mission. Well, hello, China Mapp. Mission statement and change of committee name, and you're looking for two different votes. Am I correct?
Yes.
Okay. Go ahead.
Mayor? Okay. Good evening, Madam Chair, Board members. My name is China Mapp, and I am a member of the Affirmative Action Committee. I'm speaking on behalf of the committee members, many of whom are in the audience. We're here to request your approval to officially change the name of the committee and to present a new mission statement. We are fortunate to have many active members and liaisons. Our committee members are Manonjo Johnson, our Chair, Malini Kioato, Dr. Amy Bauer, and myself. We particularly thank Heather Goldstone for joining our committee as a liaison to the Select Board. We thank Susan Lumpkin, Director of Human Resources, for her constant support. Mr. Henry St. Julian to keep us up to date with what's happening in Falmouth Public Schools. Mr. Chris Lumpkin for reporting to the School Committee, and Ms. Chloe Bridges, who is our student member. And as always, we gladly welcome and are seeking new members. So, this is our proposed new name. We are here to request a formal change of name from the Town of Falmouth Affirmative Action Committee to the Town of Falmouth Diversity, Equity, Inclusion, and Belonging Advisory Committee. What prompted us to change the name? It has been in the works for a while. We've been talking about it. We just want to move away from affirmative action alone and lean more into diversity, equity, inclusion, and belonging. And we just decided that this was a good way to foster collaboration with other organizations. The new DEIB, or Diversity, Equity, Inclusion, and Belonging branding, is an attempt to modernize the advisory committee and show the public what its goals are. The Affirmative Action Committee has had its name since its inception and has existed in some fashion for decades. The term advisory will help secure the committee's power, not just its mission, and the addition of the term will help, we think, with branding in a way that, right now, the current name The new mission statement, and I'll read it for the purpose of the minutes. The Falmouth Diversity, Equity, Inclusion, and Belonging Advisory Committee promotes an equitable, just, and welcoming environment in Falmouth where all feel included and respected. We review town policies, procedure, and programs through a DEIB lens and make recommendations for improvements to the Select Board. We proactively engage with Falmouth Town Government, community partners, the school district, residents, and visitors to achieve this goal. We welcome all to share any DEIB-related concerns with the committee, and we will suggest resources and supports as needed. We are committed to fostering a safe and respectful space where all are welcome to exchange ideas, share information, and participate in making Falmouth a community that recognizes and embraces the inherent worth and dignity of all people.
Let's bring it to you.
So, thank you. Are there any questions?
I'd like to motion to approve the new committee name of the Diversity, Equity, Inclusion, and Belonging DEIB Advisory Committee.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion amongst the board? Seeing none, all those in favor? Aye. I think that's awesome. I think it's spot on. The second thing that I would like to say, China, is that, for me, the most important paragraph in your mission statement is the last one. And in some ways, I'd like to see you lead with that. But having said that, I would like to motion to approve the new mission statement as presented, and really want to thank you for your work on this.
Second again.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion amongst the board? Hearing none, all those in favor? Aye. Awesome. Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you so much. Well done.
Hearing none. Hearing none.
Oh, sorry. Did I hear any?
You weren't hearing any.
I'm sorry, did you want to make a call?
I did not.
Oh, okay.
Think it's good.
She wasn't letting you anyway.
No, I just think they have done amazing work. They have waited and waited and waited for this to happen, and I thought it was really important to make it happen. Okay, so, we're going to move on. Consider request for a waiver of the special event permit fee for the 25th Annual Chris Wetherby Memorial Toy Run Motorcycle Fundraising Ride, Sunday, 11/3/24. And I know Tammy is here to answer any of your questions. Does anyone have any questions?
Does anyone not remember last year?
Anything you'd like to add, Tammy?
No, just, I would really appreciate the support. This is the 35th year that this ride has taken place. It was started 35 years ago by the Ladies of Harley, of which my mother was one of the first members of on Cape Cod. That's how it became named in her name, and this year, it's 25 years in her memory. And we are continuing to support the kids on Cape Cod and the islands, and I really feel the need is just sadly getting greater each year.
Yeah.
I would agree.
For sure.
I would approve approval.
I'll second Mr. Brown's motion, Madam Chair.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion amongst the board? Mr. Brown?
No.
All set.
Hearing none. All those in favor? Aye. Unanimous. Thank you, Tammy.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we are going to move over to consider request for a variance to the sign code. 184-30 movable, portable, or mobile signs, sandwich board sign, Falmouth Elks Lodge, number 2380140 Palmer Ave. Mr. Renshaw?
Since I'm a member of the club, I guess I'd better step out.
That would be great. Thank you.
All right.
Mr. Renshaw?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll just, real quick overview, summary, and we'll turn it over to the applicant. The applicant representative, Mr. Richard Smith, submitted a request for a variance to sign code Section 18430 D1A, which, as you stated, is movable, portable, or mobile signs to allow for the placement of a sandwich board style sign in front of the establishment. The current code allows for sandwich board signs under two very specific conditions, one of which is to advertise perishable goods for sale only, such as food goods or a menu, and the second, for any business in its first year of operation, the sign may be used in the absence of a multi-tenant or freestanding sign, but only for a four-month period. Madam Chair, Select Board, the Building Department has reviewed the request and has indicated to my office that it had no issues or concerns in regard to the approval of this variance request. So, it would be my recommendation, the Select Board approve the request for a variance to sign code 184 for this application.
Questions from the board to the applicant?
We've had another sandwich board variance hearing recently, and the issue at hand seemed to really be blocking sidewalks based on the photos. And my experience, driving past this sandwich board is typically on the grass, not impinging on the sidewalk, correct?
It's on the grass.
Thank you.
And on occasion, they do have perishable foods, because don't you have a food giveaway?
Yeah.
A food giveaway, or what, once a month, twice a month now?
Dinners, yeah.
I don't know, I'm not in the food side of it.
Madam Chair, if everybody's done, I'd move the request.
Second. Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion amongst the board? Seeing none, all those in favor? Aye. opposed? No. Three to one, it passes.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, we're going to move on to number eight. Consider approval of an application for a grant of license for proposed landscape work in Town Hall Square. Mr. Johnson, stop. I'm going to push this over to you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, the request before you tonight is from the owners of the Blue Moon Restaurant located right here in Town Hall Square, 153 to 159 Main Street is the official address, but it does a but, Town Hall Square as well. The ownership, Boghossian Development seeks to improve the appearance of the area abutting its recently approved outdoor patio. Counsel, legal counsel for the owner, Attorney Robert Amen is requesting approval of a license agreement to authorize the restaurant to install and maintain certain landscape improvements on town property. This request has been reviewed by the Engineering Office and Town Council Maura O'Keefe. Town Council wrote the agreement, which incorporates several suggestions received from the town engineer with respect to drainage and maintenance requirements. I would note that approval of the landscape will result in improvements to town property at no cost to the town. The restaurant is committing through this license agreement to maintain the landscaping during the term of the license. The agreement, as a standard with any license agreement, is revocable by the Select Board at any time, and the board may be aware that there was, there has been some contention among the abutters about access to a private right of way, that the patio extends into this right of way. Legal counsel has looked at that matter. It is a civil matter, so the town is not taking a position one way or another with respect to that dispute among private abutting landowners. And I would further note that the board's action tonight is neutral on that issue. So, this is a license agreement for landscape improvements. These landscape improvements in and of themselves will not interfere with the private way, private access, public access to that private right of way. So, again, there is a civil dispute among private property owners. This approval or denial of this landscape, this license agreement for landscaping does not impact that dispute one way or the other.
Thank you.
Question?
Questions? Mr. Amen, are you here for this, just in case there are questions? Thank you, sir. Go ahead.
Is this project under special permit?
So, there was a, and Attorney Amen can elaborate, there was a special permit application. That permit was not approved. There were three votes in favor, two votes against. It required a four-to-one approval. However, the project has been redesigned, so it no longer requires a zoning board special permit.
Any other questions? Mr. Brown? Mr. Brown?
Just to clarify, the way was never a public way, it was a private way.
That's correct.
That's why we're not involved.
That's exactly right.
Okay.
Ms. Goldstone, did you have a question?
More of a comment on the landscaping plan, given the conversations that this board had at our strategic planning workshop about water conservation. Would just love to see, this is on town property, and would love to see us walking the walk and ensuring that the plantings that are there are as, as low water usage as, as possible, setting that example for, for water conservation with the plantings. But I, I think the, the improvement overall looks like a great win-win.
Excellent suggestion. Any other questions?
No, I had most of my questions answered ahead.
Would anyone like to make a motion?
I have a discussion.
Just, absolutely, go ahead.
There may be something you wanted to speak to the applicant about, Heather, not to, you know, there may be a consideration you want to get on the record as a matter of the record for water conservation and the type of plants. Just a suggestion.
Yeah, and it will be on the record and in, in our notes, and I'm sure Mr. Amet would also take the story back. Anything else? Any other conversation? Okay, I would entertain a motion.
Motion to approve the license, I don't have, I'm trying to find the exact wording. Motion to approve the license for the project at Blue Moon, don't have it in front of me.
For landscape work in Town Hall Square.
There we go.
Jason to Blue Moon Sea Grill, Inc., 159 Main Street, Falmouth, as presented.
Exactly as Mr. Johnson Staub just said it.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion amongst the board? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, it's unanimous. Thank you.
I apologize, we were just outside, we should have been in here.
Yeah, no problem.
We knew where to find you.
You were here early.
Okay, we're going to move to consider approval of an intergovernmental agreement with the Barnstable District Department of Veteran Services for temporary veteran services, officer services. I'm going to kick that over to you, Mr. Johnson Staub.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, to begin with, I want to make very clear, I know the board is aware, but for the public's sake as well, that what the board is being asked to approve tonight is a very temporary agreement for the Barnstable Veterans District to assist the town of Falmouth while we have a vacancy in our veterans director position. We are at the tail end of our recruitment process to fill that position on a permanent basis. So, this is, as I said, an agreement with the Barnstable Veterans District. So, that's a, it's a regional entity, it's a separate entity, it's not the county, it's not the town of Barnstable, it's a separate regional veterans district. They provide the same type of veteran services for residents of every Cape Town except for Falmouth. So, you know, the, the core of the work is accessing federal VA benefits and state Chapter 115 benefits, and there are some, you know, in general advocating for and assisting veterans and some other roles that go along with that. Don Lincoln is our, of course, our current veterans director. He is retiring at the end of this month, and there will be something of a gap between his departure and our bringing in a full-time Falmouth veterans director. The district has been extremely cooperative and generous to offer to assist Falmouth in that interim period. They were a helpful resource to me as well in our recruitment and selection process. So, I want to call out Greg Quilty is the director of the Barnstable Veterans District, and Bob Lawton is the president of the council, and I appreciate their support. We are, we have an agreement in principle, you have the language in front of you tonight. We would be compensating the district on a weekly basis, and I should say, they will be providing office hours in Falmouth at our office. They'll have a certified veterans agent available here in town for those weeks that we do have a vacancy in our position, and we will compensate them for that.
That's pretty nice.
So, it's a stopgap measure until you hire someone and bring them on board, correct?
Exactly.
So, we will, Falmouth will have their own veterans office. I'm going to go to Mr. Muscala and then Mr. Zalinski.
No, I just wanted to, whoever reached out to them to do this temporarily, I commend you, because it's a wonderful way to transition and allow you enough time to select the right candidate and keep the veterans getting their benefits and their information. So, whoever it was, thank you for, for reaching out to Barnstable County for it.
And it's important to not have a break in services.
Exactly.
Which is, I think, what you're saying. Go ahead, Mrs. Zalinski.
I would echo Member Muscala and the Chair's sentiments on this, and if you're looking for a motion, I would be happy to present one.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion amongst the board?
One thing to say, Madam Chair, in response to Select Board Member Muscala. Peter Johnson Staub took the lead on this, so it was Peter's initiative completely. Just wanted to acknowledge Peter for his work on it.
Thanks, Peter. Thank you.
Thank you, good job. If I might just, I want to also make one other clarification, make sure the board is aware, what we're asking, on the specific of the motion, we're asking you to authorize the town manager to enter this agreement. There may be some refinement of the technical language. As I say, the, the compensation we're, we're square on, and the principle we're square on, but if the attorneys go back and forth and need to make some technical changes, you're authorizing the town manager to enter that agreement.
Madam Chair, I'll amend my motion to the description of these assistant town managers.
Do you have a motion?
As, as amended, I second the amendment.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion amongst the board? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Thank you. Thank you for your work on that, it's really important. Okay, the last item on our business agenda is to review the summative annual performance evaluation of our town manager. And I want to thank Mr. Brown, Mr. Brown and Mr. Zalinski for taking the lead on this. My job was simply to collate it and reflect the, the sentiments of the board, the comments from the board, and the comments were taken right from your own individual evaluations and just collated together, and nothing in them have been changed. The other pieces, every board member has seen a copy of this and had all signed that they approved of this evaluation moving forward. I did take it to the town manager, he has not signed it yet, he, I have to give him the opportunity to review it. The board has signed off on it, and it will be up to Mr. Renshaw to sign off at this point. So, as you know, we look at several factors when we evaluate the town manager, I believe there are 11 of them, and I'm just going to go through what the factors are, and each board member had to assign a value to each factor. And I'll just quickly tell you what the evaluations are. If you assign a one, it's a needs improvement, a two, it meets expectations, a three, it exceeds expectations, and a four is exceptional or outstanding. So, factor number one was knowledge, and the overall rating was a 3.1 for Mr. Renshaw, which means he exceeded the board's expectation, and that is an average of everyone's number. And there are several comments. Basically, the, the thought was that you learned a lot in Massachusetts, you jumped right in, and I'm not saying these verbatim, that you have proven to be a quick study, you absorb information very effectively, you have repeatedly demonstrated a high-level understanding of Massachusetts finances, policies, procedures, resolutions, state and federal laws and regulations in the town of Falmouth's operations. You work to remain knowledgeable and up to date on changes and growing trends in the practices through research, your professional organization, and certainly reaching out to other Cape managers. You have engaged with the Falmouth community leaders to add to your knowledge and understanding of the particular history of Falmouth and our practices and procedures. Productivity, factor number two, all, overall rating, 3.4. All indications lead whomever to believe that you will excel in this aspect of your position. You have, one person was thoroughly impressed with your ability to handle difficult tasks quickly and accurately. You've demonstrated on multiple occasions that you know how to prioritize tasks and focus on them until they're complete. You encourage input from those with direct knowledge experiences with issues and subjects, and take that into consideration of your work. Factor number three is decision-making. Overall rating is a 3.4. You're a decisive decision-maker, you make decisions based on data, you excel in all areas. Factor number four, oral communication was a 3.4. You're clear and articulate in your oral presentations, you're an excellent speaker, you're effective, you're an active listener, and you report out to your staff and the board in a manner that is respectful, effective, concise, and logical. Your written communication is a 3.2. Appreciate your effective communication. Disappointed that in some areas, the Select Board is not informed in advance to certain decisions that the town manager may consider operational, in quotes. I'm very impressed with Mr. Renshaw's response time and level of organization. His written communications are well organized and understandable, and your reports and presentations are well-prepared, organized, and data-informed. Financial administration was a 3.2. You work incredibly well with the Finance Department, Finance Committee, and Assistant Town Manager on financial administration. You continue to dig into long-existing issues the town has been facing for years. While you're new to Massachusetts, you have been a quick study in understanding the complexities of balancing a financial budget, and you effectively work with the Finance Department and Finance Committee to develop and present a responsible town budget. Leadership, overall rating was a four, which is exceptional and outstanding. You have proven to be an, an outstanding leader. For one person, leadership factor is the most important. Feedback received from staff and department chairs is indicative of a very strong leader who believes in investing in employees and does not shy away from managing difficult conversations and situations. Factor eight is public relations, overall rating 3.4. You, Mike has impressed the members of the community with his responsiveness, honesty, and willingness to listen. Community members are thrilled that Mike regularly attends events and engages with participants. He attends many after-work functions, meetings, also makes it his personal cellphone available to the committee. Your communication skills are outstanding in his presentations to the board and the public, goes above and beyond work hours to attend public events and support different groups in our town. Work relations, overall rating 3.2. Prudent in keeping the Select Board's priorities in the forefront of his work, very open and forthcoming. Mr. Renshaw has demonstrated outstanding skills relating to his coworkers. Factor 10, overall rating is a 3.2. It's staff development and training. Some found it difficult to rate you on this attribute effectively, but this person did note that new union contracts contain educational incentives. This makes the person believe that you will be supportive of continued educational opportunities for your staff and yourself. You encourage staff development and opportunities for development. Mr. Renshaw is a strong supporter of upward mobility for his staff. And factor number 11, personnel practices, overall rating is a 3.1. You're off to a good start with some unusual staffing challenges. One person did not know enough to comment on this, however, they were unaware of any situation or instance where you did not handle conflict well. You have successfully demonstrated your strong ability in labor relations, you work very closely with the Personnel Department, and you've made some very key hires. You continue to improve productivity in this department by collaborating with the Personnel Director. You are honest, fair, and you accept all responsibility. Your summative overall rating from this board is a 3.7. You're off to a really good start. You, one member, Mike has far exceeded my expectations as our new town manager. He has successfully brought knowledge from his previous experiences and very quickly learned to tailor that knowledge to Falmouth. He is open-minded enough to learn from others while being confident in his ability to make the best decisions for this town. He's gained the respect of the town staff, committee members, community members, and the Select Board. Overall, he's doing an amazing job, and I look forward to him continuing his good work on behalf of Falmouth. I do not have any suggestions for improvement. Could not be happier with Mike's first-year performance, I hope he's here for a very long time. Another comment, you are approachable, knowledgeable, and very responsive. Your leadership is your greatest strength. Your decisions are based on data and input from your staff and many leaders of the community. You have shown a very successful transition to Falmouth and Massachusetts, and you have an unwavering commitment to learn and bring fresh ideas to our town. Some strengths listed, public speaking and relations, willingness to learn, and to admit when mistakes are made and take responsibility for them. You've shown willingness to be engaged in the community. You appreciate the monthly, this person appreciates the monthly reports from department heads and in advancing the publication of the Select Board Agenda. And one area of improvement, as previously stated, certain important decisions and initiatives, I would like to hear in advance. That was a comment. So, I, I'm not sure that your summative evaluation could be any better.
Thank you. Madam Chair, Select Board, it's been a great first year. I've loved every minute of it. We've got a lot of great, a lot of work to do yet, but we just have a great team. Peter and I get along and work together really well. All of the department heads are starting to kind of get it and understand the importance of, you know, their work in relation to your strategic plan. You know, one of the things I, I love about these reviews, I do hyper-focus on, on, on the comments for improvement, because I think that's important for any manager to continuously improve. So, I will be looking at it with that eye towards the needs for improvement, because everybody has them. So, again, thank you for the great comments, for the great evaluations. Been a fantastic first year, and I'm looking forward to many, many more serving, serving you and the residents of Falmouth. So, thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Great year.
And I think it is important to take, to take that feedback. I, I also think it's important to understand how this board has evaluated your performance, and that is, it's outstanding.
One last comment, if I could, Madam Chair?
No.
I think it's going to be really important for, for the team, right, for the town manager team, and particularly for, for me, is still relatively new, to have an opportunity in the near future to sit down with the board and, and talk about goals, objectives for the upcoming year. You know, I use the strategic plan as that guide, but I think having that meeting with the Select Board in its entirety and getting some direction and feedback on what the goals should be for the upcoming year would be very helpful.
And I would ask for, moving forward, if anyone would like to email me to take the reins on the, like, an evaluation working group, Doug and Scott did it this way, this year. I think that's a great point, Mr. Renshaw, but if anyone would like to take that up, please email me.
If anybody wants any extra work.
Okay, we're going to move into the minutes. Has everyone had an opportunity to take a look at and evaluate the minutes of the meeting of public session, August 12, 2024?
Hey, congratulations.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Mr. Muscala?
I did not. But I could see I'd make a motion to approve the minutes of the public session, August 12, 2024.
Madam Chair, I'll second Mr. Muscala's motion.
Okay, any further discussion? Anybody see anything?
Thanks for kicking them out quickly.
Yeah, boy, we've never been this, this up to speed. Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion amongst the board? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, Mr. Renshaw, I'm going to kick it back to you for your supplemental report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I don't have a supplemental report this evening. Thank you.
Okay. How about, how about Select Board reports? Mr. Muscala?
I did have the pleasure of attending the, the meeting that Mr. Johnson Staub attended, the Gulf Advisory Committee. It was a very lively It was a very lively discussion amongst the members of the committee and public as regards the impending RFP for the Falmouth Country Club. Some of the issues that were raised was, were the length of term for the lease, the need for capital improvement plan or capital projects as opposed to a capital plan. But all in all, the sense of the committee was in favor of the, at least of broad outlines of the RFP that Mr. Johnson Staub presented to the committee. But it is, it is a big lift for the town going forward, and something we're going to have to, you know, pay close attention to when it comes before us on September 9, I think. So that's the goal. That's it.
Ms. Goldstone?
Can I share, I realized I forgot something during recognitions, which is, I noticed the Home of the Clippers flags up on Main Street, and when we approved those, there was some discussion about the extra effort required on the part of DPW to change out all of those flags, and so just wanted to recognize the DPW for putting them up there. Our Main Street looks great and super supportive of all our kids as they head back to school.
Timing was perfect. Mr. Brown?
I attended the Waterways Committee last week, and they are moving forward with both, including the McGansett entrance to the 10-year plan, the dredging plan, as well as taking up the request from McGansett Neighbors to dredge the interior portion where they've assembled their own money for permitting and engineering. And that now has been, the notice of intent has been submitted to the Bourne, Town of Bourne, so they'll take it under advisement and get back. And it'll have to be a, kind of a collaborative effort on working together towards that. And I think we're probably going to be the only town participating financially, so it's a request that, I think the McGansett people said that they would pay for the permitting and just try to get that squared away, and from there, it's not really committed to what we'll do, but I hope we can keep that in mind, that it's a request. They haven't had that harbor dredged in 70 years, so. They used to have nine feet of draft, now they're down to three. Nobody in there can have a sailboat anymore, so. It's a legitimate request, but it's one more thing to pay for if we can, you know, consider it. I attended the Water Quality Management Committee, and they are moving forward with all their initiatives. This week coming, they're going to be doing the watershed study of the Wacoit Bay estuary. So I invited my Select Board member, Michael Wyman-Columbo from Mashpee, because she is the one who's assigned to that wastewater planning group where we're intermunicipal cooperation. So she's going to be coming to attend on Wednesday and review that, just to stay updated on it as well. And on Thursday, Mark Forrest and I and other members of the Cape and Islands Municipal Leaders have a meeting with Lieutenant Governor Driscoll, where hopefully we'll get some answers on some of the stuff that's coming up right now with the legislation to expedite permitting for renewable projects. I'm going to ask some questions about why aren't we expediting the grid repairs? Because as we saw on Saturday, this, you know, there's a lot of information we got from Stephanie Madsen, but ultimately, she can't really answer why these caps can't be lifted. So maybe the Lieutenant Governor could have some more insight or share information with us, who we can talk to about it, because to me, it's frustrating that we're talking about expediting permit for wind projects when we can't get the grid fixed to have solar projects that we want to do. So that's all I got.
Mr. Zelinski?
CCMPO meeting for this month was canceled. As I mentioned before, I'm going out of state on Wednesday, be back the end of the weekend, but if anybody needs to get in touch with me, colleagues or constituents, I am always available by the cell number everyone has.
And I'd like to report that little feet are still rocking it at the Melody Tent.
Anything else from the board? Would anyone like to make a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second Mr. Muscoli's motion, Madam Chair.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion amongst the board? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Go ahead.